Board members, for however late we get started, it's for however extra minutes I'm going to add on after 5:00. So, I don't know how else to get you to the table. Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Toland, I really need you at the table. I'm getting told by a former principal on being a mean teacher. I am trying to be sensitive that everybody wants to get on the road, the new board members who are going to an orientation in Richmond. So, without further ado, this budget work session will begin. I am serving as the budget chair along with Dr. Riccardi Anderson as my vice chair. I am ceding the microphone and time now to our illustrious CFO, Ms. Burden. She is going to do two presentations. They'll both be brief, but the first one is just to do an overview of the process of our budget preparation and development. And then the second one will be the meat and potatoes that we got from Dr. Braybrand this past Thursday on the budget. Board members, when you would like to be put into the queue to ask questions, please signal to either me or Ms. or Dr. Anderson, and we will get your names on the list. There we go, Ms. Burden.
I'll turn that on. This is my second budget for FCPS, and I'm very proud of it and what it may accomplish for FCPS students and their employees. Special thanks have to go to my right-hand person, Alice Wiggington, Director of Budget Services, without whom I would not have survived the last two years. There's just no getting around it. And the rest of my directors, too. I'm very appreciative of their talent and hard work. They do make a difference and are very supportive of me. This chart identifies the work session objectives. First, I'll provide an overview of the 21 superintendent's proposed budget by major category. We can field questions that you have about that budget and any that require research, of course, will be taken as budget questions. There needs to be a discussion about the staffing initiatives placeholder, the $6 million that the superintendent made recommendations about. I sent an email on Friday, late Friday, about the budget question process, so you may have questions about that. And lastly, we'll provide information about adoption of the fiscal '21 school board advertised budget. This is just a list of the items that we'll review today, where the money goes, where it comes from, a summary of the school operating fund, a budget question process, and adoption. So, where it goes. With any budget, there's an expenditure budget and a revenue budget, and they must always balance. Our expenditure budget and revenue budget totals $3.2 billion. The chart on the left shows expenditures by category, and over $2.8 billion, or nearly 90%, goes to salaries and benefits. And that's pretty typical for K-12. The other 10% goes to logistics or operating, basically all of your non-salary items. The chart on the right shows the revenue budget or where it comes from. Over 70% comes from the county, with nearly 25% coming from the Commonwealth, for a total of 95% of the budget, revenue budget, coming from those two sources. The remaining 5% comes from other sources, like the federal government, the beginning balance, city of Fairfax, fees, those kinds of things. The superintendent's proposed budget presentation aligns the budget and the budget increase by strategic plan goals. And the mapping by strategic plan goals is very important, but that's sometimes hard for people to understand. Most people think about the budget in a more traditional way, by category like salaries, benefits, those kinds of things. So, we're providing the operating fund summary by major category, which we've defined as salaries and benefits, which totaled $106.2 million; enrollment and student populations requiring differentiated instruction or changing demographics at $28.8 million; and then the other increases, which we have some required increases at $9.4 million, and strategic investments at $17.8, for a total of $172.2. It's basically just a different distribution of the same dollars. This category is simply another lens for your analysis and underscores our focus on supporting our people through the premier workforce. So, step increases for all eligible employees average 2.5% or $50.1 million. A market scale adjustment of 1% is included, and that's calculated at 25.3. Other scale enhancements total $18.5 million, and that includes the elementary principal pay parity, the second year of the CIS enhancement. But most of these funds have not been definitively earmarked at this point. The governor's budget supports teacher raises at 3% in fiscal '22, or the second year of the biennium, but not in fiscal '21. My understanding that the teacher associations are up in arms and currently lobbying to have some sort of salary increase be considered in fiscal '21. So, we need to see how that plays out along with the county's revenue projections before we definitively decide what that other scale enhancement dollars will fund. We have employee benefits, which is healthcare at $13.3 million, VRS at $15.6, and workers' comp at $2.5 million, for a total of $31.4. And then our base savings, which represents the recurring savings due to position turnover in fiscal '20 is about $19.1. So, the total is $106.2, and almost all of these items fell under premier workforce, except for health, which falls under caring culture. A projected increase in enrollment of 1,423 students, or 0.8%, is the result of actual enrollment coming in higher than anticipated in this current year. That current actual enrollment is what drives your enrollment projections in the next year. And although enrollment's been relatively flat over the past few years, I believe we came in slightly over our projection in this current year. And this information is going to differ slightly from what you may have just heard with the capital improvement program, because any time we talk about enrollment in the budget, we are comparing what we, the adopted projected enrollment was in the fiscal year compared to the cost of the projected enrollment in this current year. Because what was in the adopted budget is what the budget was based on. So, we wouldn't want to use the actual September 30. We use what the previous year's budget was projected for. Students needing differentiated instruction have a growth rate that is much greater than total enrollment. Dr. Braybrand talked about this last Thursday night. Special education students are expected to rise 955 students, or about 3.5%. English learners, 768 students, or 2.2%. And our free and reduced eligible students has risen 3,791. Did I forget to move it? No, sorry. I'm not used to clicking for myself. Or 6.9%. There are over 100 staffing standards that can be found in the appendix of the budget document. And those are just formulas that we use with the enrollment projections to determine how much staffing that we need at the school-based. The staffing standards provide a base level of equity. They improve budgetary planning, and they ensure compliance with state standards. And I guess you know that staffing needs are more about distribution than net increases, because kids don't come to the schoolhouse door in packages of 26. If they did, we could be at the utmost efficiency in staffing our schools. But it just doesn't work that way. Changes in student enrollment and demographics results in 323 more positions at a cost of $28.8 million. The classroom staffing that's related to the percentage of free and reduced students are embedded in the classroom teacher allocations. Free and reduced students are weighted in the formulas, and so you won't see that broken out as an individual cost, because it's embedded in the cost of general education. Elementary schools will receive 16.8 more positions. It's a variety of things, teachers, assistant principals, office, and custodial, offset by less IAs, because their actual projected enrollment is down from the previous year's adopted. Middle school will receive an additional 38.3. That's primarily teachers. Their, that level of enrollment is up compared to the previous year's adopted. High school, same thing. They're up over 1,000 kids from the previous year's adopted, and so they're expected to get about 59 teachers, and it's primarily teachers. The increase in English learners results in 42 additional teachers. And the special education increase of 955 students, coupled with lower pupil teacher ratios than classroom teachers, results in 168 new teachers and IAs. And if you want to see even more detail than this, you can find that on the benchmark section of the budget on page 116. So, if you want that broken down a little further, you can see that there. Okay. This next chart basically represents the other increases. These are increases that are required, year-end recurring items at $2.6 million. And those are things that were approved as part of fiscal, the end-of-year fiscal '19 to be included in the fiscal '20 budget. But fiscal '19 year-end represents one-time funds. And so, that covers it for fiscal '20, but we have to add it into fiscal '21 if it is a recurring cost. So, this is the CIS scale enhancement. We did a little piece of that at the end of the year using non-recurring funds. The Perkins Grant funding was a year-end change. The trades for tomorrow at .2 million. Middle schools for late buses and after-school programs, .2. Some PD for enhanced behavior and crisis management of .3. And then the seven substance abuse prevention specialist positions, .6 million. And so, all of those things together are the year-end recurring items that are funded in fiscal '20 but with non-recurring funds. So, we have to have a way to get those into the fiscal '21 budget. There are also contractual increases, which are generally things that we have to do because they're just inflationary increases in contracts that are built into the contracts, things like that, electricity rate adjustments, primarily those kinds of things that fall under facilities or IT, a couple of things under instruction. And that's at $6 million. Transfers to other funds, which is a transfer to the school construction fund, and an increased transfer to the grants fund for a cable communication grant of 1.3 total. And then centralized instructional resources, which is basically textbooks. Historically, textbooks has, the reserve for that has resided outside the school operating fund, and that's a little bit problematic in people understanding what that means. And so, for this year, for the first time, we have moved that into the school operating fund. It has revenue that goes along with it. So, even though it's a $9.4 million increase on the expenditure side, there's also a $9.4 million increase on the revenue side. We're just pushing those from a separate reserve into the school operating fund. So, even though it sounds like a big increase, it has revenue that goes with it. So, even if you reduced it, we'd have to reduce the revenue, so it's kind of a no harm, no foul. And the strategic investments, we spent, we spent a bit of time this weekend trying to figure out how we wanted to show this, because, of course, most of these cross many of the four strategic plan goals, whereas the others are pretty clean, that, you know, the salaries and benefits are primarily a premier workforce and those kinds of things. So, we finally decided that we'd do it by chief. And the chief equity office is $5.5 million, and that includes, you know, all of the things that the superintendent talked about on Thursday night, the educational specialist and resource teacher to expand teacher leadership opportunities and develop and deliver integrated professional development experiences, a specialist position for compliance, the OSS expansion, Office of Support Services, often called Project Momentum, .6 for additional, .25 Assistant Athletic Director at the high schools, the special education chairs at $3.5 million, the comprehensive behavior intervention and support to school teams, and the equity plan for discipline policies and practices. All of those things fall under the chief equity office. The chief operating office is $1.1 million increase, and that's two facility trades positions, an assistant director position in the budget office, a licensure specialist, and one manager to reorganize the TAM office in HR, the Call Me Mr. program in HR, the .2 million, and a .2 million for a domain architect in IT. And all of those things together total $1.1 million. The deputy superintendent's office, all of these things fell under student success, additional funds for online campus, additional funds for pre-K and early head start, funding to support a third executive principal at Regions II and III, FCPS ON for high schools and middle schools. The high school piece is $2.8 million, and that's for our lease obligation for those devices. And the middle school expansion is expected to cost $1.1 million in fiscal '21. But that is coupled with $1.1 million of revenue in tech support fees, so it really doesn't have an actual increase in fiscal '21 to our budget. And then the superintendent's office is .2 million for an additional assistant division council, and hopefully that will reduce reliance on outside counsel for litigation. And then the $6 million placeholder for investments to be determined by the school board for the staffing initiatives. The staffing initiatives placeholder recommendations is this next chart, and this is the exact same chart that Dr. Braybrand showed you all last Thursday night. The $1.5 million dropout prevention, $1 million for the advanced academic programs awaiting the result of that review, .8 million in equity per pupil at the high school, the school board support to be decided, and then $1.4 million is a recommendation for school counselors in anticipation that the Virginia Boards of Education recommendation that we have a 250 to 1 pupil teacher ratio for counselors would be implemented in some ways soon, maybe not straight to the 250 to 1, because that's very expensive. The budget question process is the next slide, and that basically tells you everything that I told you in an email on Friday afternoon. So, if you have any questions on that, we'll be glad to answer them. And then the school board advertised budget. The goal of the school board advertised budget is for you all to adopt a budget that conveys the needs of FCPS, and that is transmitted to the county board of supervisors. Today, we are having our first work session, where, you know, you all can ask or submit questions for us to research and provide responses to. You also need to discuss, you know, school board priorities, the $6 million, those kinds of things. On January 28th, we'll have the public hear, the first public hearing. We also, you know, have one on 29, on January 29th or the 30th, if they're, 30th, if they're needed. And then January 31st is the second work session after the public hearings, so you can consider that input, and that's discussion of potential amendments. Just following the process that we've followed in previous years. If you do have amendments, you know, if you, if you have amendments along the way, like from now till, till then, you know, and need assistance with writing those amendments, you know, I can help you. Eileen sometimes helps with, with those. So, you don't have to wait until February 1st. If you're thinking about something that you want to do, need help with the language, want us to cost it out, that's fine. We're, we'll be glad to help you with that. But I guess the deadline is, though, by 4:30 to the clerk on February 1st, so that we can cost those things, so we'll have ample time to cost those things out before you actually adopt your budget on February the 7th. You know, sometimes you don't need our help. Like, if you ask a question like, "What does it cost to do this?", and we, you get an answer to your budget question, and the response says it's, you know, $2 million, then you certainly can write an amendment using the response from the budget question to, to drive the costing, and that will be accurate. But what happens sometimes is people want to do complicated things or thing, you know, and if you wait until the last minute, that's not, you know, sometimes there are things, especially salary changes, that we can't calculate on the fly. We need ample, you know, ample time to be able to cost those kinds of things out. And on February 4th generally is when those amendments would be posted to board docs, and then February 7th would be when the school board would consider those amendments, again, with the goal to adopt by, for the advertised budget.
Thank you, Ms. Burden. We were just noting you might have the 2021 calendar dates, because actually everything's kind of shifted a little bit. So, we're adopting the budget on February 6th, not the 7th. Our work session will be January 30th, not 31st. And then the public hearing is January 27th, and maybe the 28th and 29th. So, it's not a big deal.
I'm so disappointed when I'm not perfect. I know that you all are disappointed, too.
Just wanted to give everybody a heads up as we started sidebar-ing a little bit on the dates and realizing.
We'll repost it.
Yeah, no problem.
Sorry.
No problem. Okay. So, with this portion now, to my colleagues, we've got roughly about an hour and 10 minutes to be able to take questions. I have been assured by our chair that in addition to the January 30th work session, which is when people will bring their budget amendments for discussion, we will need to figure out in the calendar how we're doing a second budget work session where we're actually talking about the budget, because it will not get done in this hour and 10 minutes. So, in any case, right now, we only have Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Maron noted as wanting to speak, so please start to signal with your hands if you'd like to be added to the list. And we will go ahead now and get started. Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Burden, for your hard work on this. I do appreciate that all new monies again this year have been put into each of our strategic plan categories. I would appreciate, as was adopted by the previous board, a decision to have all old monies also measured or allocated to the strategic plan, because if we can't figure out where we're already spending money along the strategic plan, we can't figure out how we can effectively evaluate where we're going with the budget. So, I would appreciate seeing that sometime.
It's in the budget document. We have allocated the, page 29, we've allocated the entire budget by strategic plan goal as well as the increases.
But not in the actual program budget? Or have you?
Proposed budget.
The proposed program budget?
We don't do, we only do a program budget at the approved level, at the third, third budget, I guess, proposed, advertised, and approved. We don't produce a program budget at the other two levels.
Okay. Well, over time, I want to see a little more clarity on that, because this one pager really doesn't do what, what was envisioned by the prior board, and I think it's essential. Second, I really appreciate all of the investments we've made over the past several years in our special ed programming. I think that we've been very intentful in addressing individual issues and trying to improve our programming. But I think we need to have a more, in presenting to the public, a more comprehensive presentation of this is how we offer these services, and this is how these additional investments enhance the services. And so, not only is the investment important, but how we communicate what we're actually doing is equally important, because I don't think people understand how all the various piece parts, and they're on multiple pages, between contractual enhancements and enhancements in professional development, enhancements in staffing, all come to get, get knit together to have a cohesive plan. Then I would also ask for, I appreciate the FCPS ON details in the, in the back of the presentation. However, what I would appreciate is a mapping of what's presented there versus what was initially planned and approved by the board. And then there was a significant investment in contracting last year, and we were not made aware that there would be this additional $2.8 million in, in funding for, for it. Then there's a $15 million investment in, in salaries, but we don't really know what it is. And so, and there's not even a link to something in the appendix. So, I would like to have more details on what you envision there, because $15.4 million is a lot of money. And last but not least, in communicating this budget, I think it's really important for people to understand that there are a number of these fixed costs that we don't have negotiating room on. So, 18% of all the new monies requested are actually attributed to health insurance and pensions. And so, I think when we communicate to the public, that will be essential as well. So, I think you have all my next steps. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Melanie Maron, followed by Carl Frisch.
So, I'm trying to figure out how to best share my comments, and I'm just reflecting on if there's, knowing that we're limited by time, is there a way that we can figure out how to facilitate all of our comments in a way that makes sense? You know, we each have probably a handful to a dozen things that we want to speak to. And so, is there some way to theme some of our comments or something so that we're not just going one by one? To make it easier to package next steps for you, to help us discuss some of the things here that we, you know, like, take, for example, I know FCPS ON, middle school, is, is a topic that several people are interested in. Well, do we need to have everyone talking about that? Can we come to some kind of consensus? Just trying to figure out here how we could better facilitate. And so, I don't know if, if Ms. McLaughlin or Dr. Anderson, if you have ideas. Just as a process, it's a process question, basically. I should have started with that, but it's a process question.
I would be happy to help with the, oops. I would be happy to help with the process that helps us to get out our questions and to theme them in the way that you have described. It would mean a shift in how we do business, and it's just a matter of us getting some quiet time to list those questions, theme them out, and then giving staff a chance to respond. I can help with that if we have opportunity to do so.
As your budget chair, what I would just say in the short term is the purpose of these work sessions is for us to be talking with each other. So, it's not just for, for Dr. Braybrand. I need to know, as the budget chair, where the other 11 of you are on FCPS ON or any one of the other things that are on here. So, I know it might seem a little clunky, but I don't know how else to do a public work session where you're all going to tell me what are your key concerns. You're always welcome to then send an email to the full board that gives maybe some context to what we're going to talk about here today, and that's why we need to have multiple work sessions. But for now, Dr. Braybrand can't know whether two people have concerns about FCPS ON or 12 unless we speak to it today.
Well, that's, I'm sorry, this is a misunderstanding. I'm proposing this as something very transparent and public, and to see, you know, does a big majority of us have the same, you know, question about a particular topic? Or, you know, just to prevent some of the replication, the theming is part of it.
Ms. Maron, the whole, the whole goal is that as one person speaks like you are now, we're taking notes about what you're saying, and then when our turn comes up, we can say, "I agree with everything Ms. Maron said and", and then add anything different. So, we're not repeating each other, but we're building off of what people are saying. Dr. Braybrand.
One thing that I might be able to help, that will help this new board, in the work session, we're doing this, and then there's going to be some next steps. But with this budget process, the budget process questions can happen anytime, all the time. So, you can share themes today and say, "I will follow up with them with budget questions", and by the next work sessions, all the rest of the board members will see both those questions and the answers to them. So, I will say, one part of what is helpful is us starting to get your reaction. "I like this. I have more questions about that", and I'll be following up with some budget questions. If it's not a budget question, but just something you want to tease out, that's part of that discussion back and forth, or learning more about why you're choosing this. So, I just want you to think that the budget question process doesn't, all your budget questions don't have to happen in the next steps of this budget work session. They can happen over the weekend, tomorrow night, later after you all reflect. So, it's themes to some degree, and areas that you like, and areas that you don't like, and areas that you want to learn more about that may be helpful.
Yeah, maybe just as we act as one board, as we share each other's thoughts, I mean, certainly that's what informs our one board. I'm also just aware of if we come up with 20, 30, 40 next steps, what are our priorities? I mean, it's a very short time window to turn around a budget. So, can we try to get to some consensus at the end? We might have 20 to 40 next steps, but really, what would we most like our staff to do that's going to make a big difference in this budget? I just, I'm concerned that we'll end up with a laundry list of things that are all important. But, again, as a term of process, what's the most important?
But, Ms. Maron, again, the goal is by the time we hit next steps, everyone sitting in this room who's still listening is going to know that we heard something, the themes come up eight times, something only came up once. And then Dr. Braybrand and his team are certainly going to meet with the chair and the vice chair. If they're, they have time limits to getting to certain things, they'll circle back to board members where they were a one-off for asking it versus something where you've been able to see eight or nine people are all asking details about that. I, I am worried about time, so, so, yes, you've got 50 seconds if you wanted to speak to this.
Well, I understand, I'm, I'm very worried about time, too. But I think as this is our first work session, I think we need to be a little flexible in recognizing there's a little bit of a learning curve, and that we all want to understand the best process so that we're not contributing to onerous, you know, things. So, it's an idea. If other people have comments on it, I certainly would love to hear them. If not, then I'm happy to continue on as planned.
I guess, Ms. Marin, I'm trying to really understand your advocacy, because we just came out of a two-and-a-half-hour work session with a similar process, and it worked pretty well. So I don't think we're going to solve a process question right now with one hour left, I'm just asking you to please reflect on it, and then what we're going to do is, we've got another work session that's going to be scheduled, and so we can then have an off, you know, the, you know, off microphone conversation to figure this out.
Okay. If we're stopping for process questions at this time, I will suspend the list, so if you have a process question.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment, if that helps.
Let me come back with you. Laura Jane was first.
I was just going to ask, maybe just because we know we want to break this into two, could we maybe restructure questions that, right now, for this session, we're trying to focus on, like, Goal 1 and Goal 2?
Questions, no? Okay, all right.
The only reason why I say that is because it's not like an even pie slice. I mean, there are certain things in Goal 1 and 2 that could be 75% of what's happening with the budget. I just, I know this is new, I really do respect that, and because it's new, and because we've been asked to stop short, when normally, sometimes, our work sessions will run longer, I'm trying to be respectful of the board members who've got to leave and get on the road. I'm just asking for this hour, can we please do what we just did the last two-and-a-half hours? Ask your questions, and then certainly happy to confer with people offline, and I'm also happy to work with the chair, but we're losing time right now.
We have another process question or comment?
Comment, this was scheduled till 5:30, so I think we need to have a recognition that we, by the board, that we can stay till 5:30, that people can. The second piece is, as far as fine tuning and focusing our conversation, what typically happens in our budget discussions, similar to our CIP discussion, is that everybody gets all of their, you know, what are their big-ticket things that they're concerned about, or things they're interested in? And based on that first discussion, that will inform our additional work on this budget. And so, for the, to give the opportunity of everybody around the table to be able to put out some of their concerns, some of their support, some of their priorities, then that will help us, I believe, as a board prioritize where we go from there. And that's why, at the next steps, what you see is people kind of going, okay, well, why don't we take Item 1, 2, and 5, and put them together? Why don't we do this one, and see how we can build on each other?
Yes, go ahead.
I have a process question that could maybe help this discussion. Are we going to be doing the two-by-twos for this new board, the way we did to?
Yes. Ms., Dr. Anderson and I talked about that last Thursday night, that we would like to go ahead and schedule two-by-twos again, that we did with the outgoing board, with everyone, before we go into the next work session. But again, I'm having to work with the chair to figure out how we get an additional work session put into everybody's calendar. So that will also help, too.
But I do think the two-by-twos, just so people know, what hap, does everybody know, so I don't need to repeat it? Everybody know what the two-by-twos are? Two-by-two board members, just like you did with the CIP, but for budget. We did that with the previous board, and now we're reconstituted, so I think that would help. Even though what we did for that purpose, it was helping Dr. Braybrand figure out priorities for what he was going to bring forward, whereas now, we're at this stage, so it will just be like, you still have your priorities, but in context of what he's already proposed.
If I could just take the next 26 questions, just kind of be in support of what Melanie shared, I think her concern is that we do have a very transparent way of teasing out the themes, because it might be missed, and maybe some people are not as vocal, so maybe you're not able to hear what may be important to more than just the speaker, just for a number of reasons. I think if we have an opportunity to think about this more fully, we can come up with a process that gives us the opportunity to, yes, these are my non-negotiables, and everyone can list their non-negotiables, and the things about which they feel more strong, they feel very strongly. And then similarly, having what I've been calling in my mind your lowlights, the things about which you have more questions, or you think that the expenditure could be made more efficiently in another place. I think we can, I mean, this is a room full of teachers, we can process this process, so that it can be transparent, efficient, and opportunity for everybody to contribute.
Ms. Marin, you do have 25 seconds, and I'm perfectly happy, actually gave you more than that time, because you were asking a process question and not ability to speak. So we can just clear the clock, and why don't you go ahead and just speak to your budget concerns?
I appreciate that, thank you very much. So, this is a very exciting budget, I think it reflects a lot of the values that we've put forth. I'd love to see regarding the market scale adjustment and scale enhancements, can we do something to have incentives for hiring those tough-to-fill positions? Well, we have Call Me Mister, that's fabulous, but what about, we know we need special ed teachers, and, gosh, all those guidance counselors we're going to hire, wherever we're going to find 125 guidance counselors, but I hope that's a good problem we can meet. I'm also curious at what happens after the three-year plan, of which we're in year two? The Office of School Improvement and Support, wow, that's new, that's pretty great, I'd love to hear more about that, and just the thinking of why it's getting reorganized, and how that will benefit ultimately the students. The Behavior Intervention Support in General Ed and for Special Ed. So it seems like last year, we added eight FTE, and this year, we've got a little bit to pay for certification, material subs, so are we still just at eight behavioral interventionists? Because it certainly seems like we need a lot more, knowing that our population is increasing by 900 students, I believe it was. I mentioned this at the forum the other night, the .1 million for professional development under caring culture for cultural responsiveness and awareness is great, but what about under student success? And that pertains to the curriculum, and our anti-racist curriculum, and the cultural responsiveness under student success. I'll let others speak to FCPs ON, know that I do not, I am not excited about rolling it out without having evaluation from the high school program. The SAT program, I'd love to know if SEC scores are needed for all post-secondary study? Is it necessary for all of our students to have that? The, and I'd really love Trades for Tomorrow, and the other thing I want to ask about is, in prior year's budgets, I recall that we were paying for a lot of AP programs, I think we were paying for up to five AP programs, six, I'm told? So what's the scoop with paying for less? Because this also contributes to our students' mental health and stress level. So we are enabling them to stress themselves out, and take a lot of AP courses, and we're also paying for it. So it seems like a disconnect there for me. I'd love to see more in there about world language, expanding somewhere between the FLESS to immersion, is there something in the middle that we can get more world language out into the schools? And I'll just say some things from the CIP discussion, the outdoor spaces, the mindfulness spaces, the joint use agreements with some other agencies to get our kids outside, to have some of these wellness practices. Those are all things I'd like to see in, for consideration, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Before I move on to Carl, I do want to just make you know the prior board's rationale for why we would pay up to six AP exams, is because we're trying to have fairness and equity to families. We pay for the IB program and the IB diploma, and it will be up to the equivalent cost of six exams, so that was why we were doing that.
Right.
But the point being that, I know you're concerned, and as I have been for eight years on the board, about the wellness and stress levels on students, but the bottom line is, what students are doing in the IB program, and the course load they're taking, is no different than six APs over the course of their high school career. So that's, we almost have to wrestle with it from an instructional point, before we go to taking away funding for AP families, not, and not the IB families. Mr. Frisch, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you. So thank you for the hard work that everybody's put in on this. FCPs ON, I noticed that you mentioned the expansion to middle school would be $1.1 million, but that, for the first year, but that that wouldn't really be an expense, because we have $1.1 million, well, you didn't say how much the revenue we're getting, the same in tech support. Who's paying that tech support money?
Parents.
So I'll just come right out and say, I'm not comfortable spending $1.1 million in tech support money from parents, that surprises me, and concerns me that we're charging parents $1.1 million for tech support based on FCPs ON in the first place. That might be something to consider from a perspective of equity, where those dollars are coming from, and could they be going back to the people who are paying them? In terms of expanding to middle school, if we have the $1.1 million, I think of all the other places that we could be spending it, until we get a comprehensive look at how FCPs ON is going in our high schools. Equity per pupil is something I'm excited about. At $800,000, I'd love to know how much it would cost to expand to elementary and middle school, or if it's bandwidth consideration. Our budget is a statement of our values, and one of the things that I think we need to grapple with is the pay that we're giving to certain segments of our staff. I look at the instructional assistance and our effort to get them to half of what our starting teachers make, so basically $25,000. To put that into perspective, a surviving wage, not even a living wage, a surviving wage in Fairfax County is $35,000, and that is just to pay for rent and taxes. It does not include medical, gas, utilities, clothing, car maintenance, renters insurance, car insurance, food, and it doesn't consider if you have a family. So, that would mean that if, on the starting salary now, which is about $23,000, that you'd start in the hole $10,000. And the response might be, we'll get a second job, it's not full-time. Okay, even with the second job, you'd be in the hole $7,600. With a third job, you'd be in the hole $3,000. I say this because it's a statement of our values, and we all know that our teachers should be being paid more. We need to stop thinking of the instructional assistance pay as something that is related to another job, and start thinking of it as more of, what do we need to attract quality people, and how do we make it so that they can live in the communities they serve? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Also, I meant to mention to board members who've already gone, you certainly can signal that you'd like to be added to the go-back list, so we can start tracking that as well. So now I have Elaine Tolan, followed by Rachna Seizmerheiser. And then board members, I need the other ones who haven't spoken yet, start signaling for me to add to.
Okay. Again, thank you for all of the work, and thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for the presentation the other night. One of the things I was really excited about after Thursday evening was the number of different initiatives around student wellness, and have a similar comment to what Karen Corbett Sanders was talking about earlier, in we have all of these great programs, and a little bit here and a little bit there. I was very happy to see that you took the initiative to group them, most of them fell under the chief equity officer, so I felt a little bit more comfortable that maybe we are looking across all of these different programs and making sure that they're all collaborative and working together, and we're getting the biggest bang for our buck. But just wanted to highlight that as something that I think we need to take a look at. Also, I'd be interested to know where these fall out, some of them are obviously high school programs, you know, I'm very concerned, too, about wellness in our middle schools, so I'd like to see which of those different types of programs are servicing our middle school students as well. In the previous discussion on the CIP, we talked extensively about the need for capacity data and analysis, and a couple of us brought up, and maybe this is a budget amendment that I need to work on, is perhaps enhancing our office, you know, planning, Jessica Gillis' office, basically, to have enough people to be able to handle that work. So I'd like to see that perhaps costed and added to the budget. I'd like to follow up with Carl's discussion on the IA salaries, and maybe add some of our facilities and custodial people to that list as well. And one thing I do want to just point out, it did not have a dollar amount associated with it, but Dr. Braybrand brought up the need in HR to change and correct positions, position reallocation and conversion. As a person that held a one-year position for eight years in Fairfax County not too long ago, I feel very strongly that that needs to be looked at, and we're not really seeing what our personnel costs are. We've got lots of people in those positions, and most of the people in those positions are people that are in new and innovative programming, and we want to make sure that we bring the best and brightest into those positions in particular, so feel strongly about that. I also appreciate that you have $1 million set aside for advanced academics, because I do think we need to look at that program and make sure that it's available to as many students as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Rachna, followed by Stella, no, Laura Jane, sorry.
Thank you very much. So just a couple of comments. I wanted to first say, I really am glad to see the student intern programs and the facilities, and the extra staff for facilities, because knowing that our facility team are very overtaxed, and I believe that they can only get to about 20% of the maintenance projects, and 80% of their time is spent reacting to problems, I think that exacerbates our facility's issues in terms of maintaining our buildings, especially with the 37-year renovation cycle. So I personally, as someone who really believes in career and technical ed and growing your own, would like to see an expansion of our student interns, or our sort of apprenticeship programs for our students in our career and technical academies, to kind of help with some of the facility needs. I did want to talk about special education a little bit. One question on these special ed chairs, .5 for each, for 70 schools, I'd kind of like to know a little more about how those schools are chosen, and what the parameters are for those schools, as opposed to which ones aren't chosen, and also whether that staffing is included as part of the building staff ratios for the special education self-contained classes. In other words, if there's a 5 to 2.5 ratio, does that position count into that ratio for the building ratios or not? I'd be concerned if it does, because it sounds like-
It does not, this would be dedicated, additional .5 staffing for every school for that chair position, not to be traded out for anything else.
I just wanted to clarify, because that's, it's a concern, and I saw Francisco over there nodding his head. The other question I have, I would love to see a return to support in special education that is not as focused on compliance and reactive behavior management. We used to have in our county, I believe, 25 or 26 inclusion resource teachers, and they were significantly involved in supporting the needs of our special education students and accessing the least restrictive environment. We also used to have six autism resource teachers, I believe it was, and considering that autism rates have gone up four, I think 4,000% in 11 years, I believe the need to have supports, and I think one of the reasons we have, first thing that seems, issues around our twice-exceptional students, is the lack of sort of inclusion-focused resource teachers, as opposed to compliance. I am, I, we need a restraint and seclusion compliance specialist, but I'm concerned that, while I know some of the job is behavioral support, that most of it's around compliance, and I believe we need more support by such sort of bits. So that's just what I want to throw out there, is more inclusion, support, and less compliance focus. The other thing I wanted to sort of bring up, I'm glad to see that there is funding for trauma-informed practices training, but I was wondering if there's a specialist or a position sort of to help work with the equity office in trauma-informed practices and the implementation of those, again, as a proactive behavior management, as opposed to preventing behavior problems. And I didn't see any funding for a sort of specialist on trauma-informed. So that was my comments on that.
Thanks very much. You know, I tried to look at this from a wants versus needs perspective. I feel like we're in a situation where we are continuing to see deficits that we're finding, when we look in particular at our special education program, and we see it manifesting itself in any number of ways that you can find on the news and not. And, you know, I, I don't think this budget goes far enough in addressing those needs, and the commitment that we continue to claim we are making to our students and families, in particular, those who are not able to verbalize for themselves their experiences. To that end, you know, I think special ed chairs, you know, that's great, except that I feel like we don't even have a behavior intervention support person for, specialist for, even one for each pyramid. So when you're talking about the people on the ground who are making the most difference- So, when you're talking about the people on the ground who are making the most difference in a kid's everyday life, that is helping come up with a plan that doesn't lead them to the kinds of place, different placement situations, that leads them to success, that helps close some of those achievement gaps and helps a much smoother inclusion opportunities, we have got to get more behavior interventionists, at least one in every pyramid, that's an additional six people. I'd also like to see us figuring out a way to use money to put people with some sort of sped training in on our 504 meetings, not using our school counselors who already don't have the opportunity to do what they thought they were signing up for, which is help our kids with their mental health. So, that frees them up more and gives someone with an eye, because I see a lot of elementary schools that are using a 504 process in lieu of getting kids the kind of support that they actually need. They use it as a stopgap, and if we had someone who was better trained in helping put those together, I feel like we would do better. With the counselor staffing, I would like to see, what does this money actually get us in terms of our ratios then? What does that mean? What do our ratios actually look at? I, like Carl, am very concerned about IA pay. I think that we need to start this year with an initiative, and it's not enough, but I think we need to come up with a three-years-to-30K plan. I think the idea that we're paying anybody any less than $30,000, you can teach preschool for low twenties and have much less responsibility and much fewer hours, and we're losing people to preschools because that's a much easier task, though it's not easy. Last, the $19.7 million for FCPS ON to middle schools, we are on that pathway, and I think that's a want. I don't think it's a need yet until proven otherwise, so.
Well done, Ms. Cohen. You squeezed a lot in. Dr. Braybrand or anybody want to comment before we move on to the next board member? Okay, all right.
I would just like to clarify, we do have one behavior intervention teacher per pyramid.
I thought we only had 18, though, right?
No, we have 24.
24, okay. My apologies.
Was the additional, we got the additional eight last year, right, Teresa, to get us when we did, and we were reacting, and we need to be proactive, but we realized that we needed to get that pyramid coverage, and we did put that out last year in the spring as our response to the board.
That's correct.
The other thing I think that happened in this budget is we took all the things that were one-time, that we only had one-time money for, and some of those were behavioral, and some of the PD, and we've made all of those ongoing funded in this budget, so that it wasn't just a one-time thing and then it goes away. And those substance abuse prevention specialists were included in that. The, a couple of other things, which we can maybe better explain in the follow-up work session.
Thank you. So, we have Stella followed by Karen Kiesgahmara followed by Abraar.
Excellent. Dr. Braybrand, thank you. I could tell that this budget was a response to the priorities that were set by the former board, so I appreciate that, and it's unfortunate we have such a little, you know, amount of time that we have to throw out all of these questions, but I have pages of questions.
Not at all. This is part of the-
I have pages, and I look forward to the two-by-two. Just very quickly, I share the concerns about FCPS ON, have for many years. I have followed this from the pilot program. We need to show return on investment. How are we measuring that? I need to know. I would like to know what happened with the parent fees this year? Where are we with that? How many parents have paid? What happens when they don't pay? Want to make sure we're not, you know, punishing any children when it comes to graduation, not being able to walk, or anything like that. Anyway, that's a question. Online campus, I would like to know more about that. I don't know if that's the, you know, if that's the yearly courses that you can take, or that's the summer courses where you have to pay. I'd like to know more, you know, the summer, when you pay, of course, the equity piece comes into it. The sped chairs, I have, you know, again, questions of effectiveness, how will they be used? What are we, you know, setting as goals? Is a half a person enough? Just, I want to make sure when we do something, we're going to do it because we're going to get positive results, and we know what we're looking towards to measure when we do it. So, a little bit on that. Office of School Support, just details, would like to know more about that. It's interesting. The cultural responsiveness teacher, why, I appreciate it. I don't have, you know, opinions one way or the other, but just would like to know, how is that different than what the Office of Equity already does? Why do we need this? The principal parity, I agree, you know, principals work very hard at every level, but at the same time, I share the concerns about our IA pay and what kind of methods we're giving when, you know, we can't get there in a reasonable amount of time. I share the concerns of Rachna when it comes to compliance versus support when we're talking about special education. And as I mentioned at the school board meeting the other night, I have concerns, and I think we need to have a conversation about where are we going to go when it comes to teacher salaries? We are market competitive. You did a lot of great work on that, but I don't think that's enough, and I think surrounding jurisdictions are having that conversation and creating plans, and I don't want to be in a position where in a few years, we're having the same conversations of, well, the best and the brightest are going somewhere else, because we know that's the most important factor in our kids' success. So, I'd like, you know, follow-on discussions on that. I think that's it. Oh, sorry.
I have Ms. Kiesgahmara followed by Abraar, and then Dr. Anderson, I will take turns. We will now add Ms. Kovacs after Abraar.
Thank you. So, Thursday, I gave a laundry list of things I wanted information on, and so I won't go back over that list, but I will say that my comments are going to center around a couple of things. One is strategy and evidence, because I know that we can come up with a wonderful list, and I don't disagree with anything on this budget proposal, but unfortunately, we don't have access, we don't handle the purse strings, and so I want to encourage my colleagues to think about, if we were the board of supervisors, what would we think, right? And so, we're bringing forth a budget asking for $172 million, more dollars than what we have previously asked for, and I think evidence is going to be a very, very big deal. And that is the reason that I took the time that I did Thursday to say, I want more information on this, I want more information on that. Ms. Corbett-Sanders mentioned some things about contractual services being listed in a number of places. That is one of the concerns I have about this budget, is that we can have the same topic in a number of different places, and it starts to look a little bit like, although I'm sure this is not intentional, but it looks a little bit like a shell game, and we need to start pulling some of those things together. All of the expenses for what are we dealing with special education, all of the expenses for contractual services, all of the expenses for salaries in one place, so that I don't, we don't, the public doesn't, the board of supervisors doesn't have to fish through a number of appendices, et cetera. I know there's been a lot of work in this, and I know that what I'm saying is painful, is even painful for me to say it, but I do think that we've had two years of a fully-funded budget. I think that, I don't know if that's luck or expertise, but I don't want to test it. I am very concerned about how we present that evidence, so I want to give that broad concern. The other thing is, we've got a number, special education is another thing that is funded in a number of places, right? It needs to come together, and I think that that also means that we have to have a conversation as a board as to what is our plan. We have been hit with a number of crises in the past couple of years since I've been on this board, but we've not been able to sit down and say, what are our priorities and where should we be putting our money? And that helps us to figure out the evidence that we're presenting and strengthens our argument. So, I'm going to give an overarching comment, and then I will submit further specific questions so that those can be addressed. These are my preliminary comments.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesgahmara. Before we move on to Abraar, we're going, Dr. Braybrand, you wanted to speak.
Just real quick, totally agree with your comments, and we're working to do with the chair a special education work session to really show all the proactive things we've done. I just want to make a nugget like on the contract services, contractual services being in other places. The prior board asked us, and we agreed to begin to align the budget to our strategic plan goals, thus we were breaking it out by category. The negative of that is, it looks like it shows up four times. We tried a little bit of that today, Ms. Burden and Alice did, to try to put benefits and salaries, EL. We can do some more of that work, and I am mindful, and I do want to continue the collaboration with the county that we have had, to say, what we're investing in does have ROI, it is evidence-based, and we can show the results. We did that with the teacher pay, and that was one of the big reasons why the board of supervisors saw, you're putting your money where your mouth is in the school system with making sure we're getting the best teachers in classrooms. So, we need to continue that. In some cases, it's those supports for the teachers to be able to do the work, and we can do better job of showing it in different ways to make that point to the board of supervisors and the community.
Wonderful. Abraar, followed by Ms. Kovacs.
Thank you, and thank you guys for putting this together. A lot of encouraging elements, of course. You know, first, I want to touch on the point of ratios that I mentioned as well on Thursday. From an equity perspective, from a perspective of thinking of holistic education for kids, maintaining certain levels with social workers and parent liaisons is critical, and I would love to see that expanded further. I'm going to touch again on mental health. Psychologists for the students, you know, in the youth surveys and whatnot, we've seen really drastic numbers of need for students, and they're desperate for those supports. So, I'd love to see an emphasis or delineation of that and attention to the fact that, you know, we're proud of what we're doing, but certainly want to recognize that we are significantly behind ratios of, you know, best practice ratios. So, looking at us being trendsetters in that regard, at least meeting, you know, where recommendations are. I would also want to point out, you know, definitely in full support of everything that was said about IAs, I want to also bring to attention, everyone's attention, something that, as I mentioned, the teachers' unions had brought to mind, which was a certain freeze that had happened with retirement benefits for staff, and I would love to see us retroactively correct that mistake of the past, where we're not necessarily, we skipped certain years that we could be paying them at the rates for. Additionally, for PD, I am encouraged, of course, to see the amount we're investing in that. I'd love to see specific notes for things like implicit bias, restorative justice in PD specified, to highlight our priorities and what we view to be important in doing that. And finally, and along those lines, very happy to see that we're providing additional support to region two and three, again, along that side of equity and prioritizing those things. Finally, because I don't want to just ask for things, but want to see where we can potentially cut, I do think there's room for reconsideration of put 9.4 million for textbooks. I think there is a movement away from some of that, and it's worth kind of just looking into our options. Obviously, first and foremost, online, but also the significant amount of bias that exists in some of this literature, and just thinking of ways that we can be more inclusive and thinking of alternatives to that, not necessarily, you know, suggesting that that's where we went ahead, but that it's worth examining and considering cuts in that direction. I think that was everything I wanted to mention. So, thank you, I look forward to continued conversation.
Ms. Kovacs, followed by Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, and thanks to my colleagues. It's interesting to hear everybody's thoughts, and as Ms. McLaughlin said, that's part of the reason we do this. I, too, had a laundry list on Thursday evening, and I won't repeat all of them, but I did want to know a couple of things. There's money allocated, a small amount, for pre-K education and early head start, and I was wondering if there was any extra monies that we could expect from the governor's budget, and when we will know that. I know he's announced that. I know we won't know until everything gets passed in, but what is, what is the plan? What would we receive if all went well? That's one question. I do think there, the idea of, one of my colleagues, Melanie, you had mentioned incentives for hiring tough positions. That is something that we talked extensively about with teachers' associations a few years ago, and, you know, they weren't in favor of that at that time. I think at this point in time, it's, again, it's a question that can come up again and see what happens, but that was talked about extensively. So, I think, you know, it's another, a new time and another reason to potentially talk about that. I hope for all of my colleagues who, I hope we have fully-funded budgets your entire tenure on the board, but for those of us who've been on the board for eight years, about 80% of the time that I've been on the board, our budgets have not been funded. And so, we are still digging out from where we were. You know, the IAs, we know that needs to be changed. When we did our three-year plan, it was a five-year plan, and then it had to stop, and then it went down to a three-year plan. When we finally got funded, our teachers were, are at 95% to 105% of the market rate. So, that happened, and I think it's really important that we understand that as we move forward, how far we've come, how many cuts we've made. Remember, we made a half a billion-dollar cuts, and we are digging out of that after several years. So, we are in a good place, a new place, and I hope we can move forward. Dr. Braybrand, again, the question about the governor's budget and ESOL programming, equity issues, how we're going to talk about that, that was not addressed. I would really like details, maybe the two-by-two are places to talk about that at first and then bring that information back here, but I'm anxious to see where we're going on that, because you talked, you talked about it in terms of attendance issues, and I kind of want to talk about it. That's part of it, but I want to talk about it more holistically.
Thank you, Ms. Kovacs. Okay, Dr. Anderson, and then I will take my turn, and then we will begin the go-backs.
Can I, can I see if anybody has any answer to the governor's portion? Does anybody know that?
I don't know. Do we know offhand how the governor's VPI funding? Part of what the governor did is he upped the class size from 18 to 20, which was a no-cost way. We already upped it from 17 to 18, so we'll need to decide whether, I'm just, I'm just being real, I know that one off the top of my head, but I don't know about the funding piece yet. Do we know, Alice?
So, Ms. Darren at Kovacs, high level. They did increase the per pupil allocation from the state to local divisions by about $600. We have a cap of 50%, so it's similar to the LCI, so we would see about half of that. I don't have an exact number that would impact us specifically. This is funding that goes through the county, as you know, and then comes to us, so we can get an exact estimate of what might happen to us. They did put several expansion-type grants in the governor's budget, and then there was like this mixed delivery add-on grant. So, we're still investigating that, working with the Office for Children as well as our own pre-K and early childhood office about our impact.
I guess, Tammy, what you're asking is, you want to figure out, what is the net new slots that we're going to have?
Yeah.
If any, as part associated, any cost that would be on us.
Because we know that it costs, you know, $300 is nothing compared to the cost.
But, so, when I say the $300, I mean, that would be an increase to the existing slots that we're getting right now, so not necessarily filling new slots, so we would anticipate some extra dollars coming to help support that.
Okay. Well, that's good. That's good news. Thank you.
Okay. I feel like I'm going to sacrifice some of my time a little bit to belabor this point of what Melanie shared earlier, because right now, I'm feeling super stressed and condensing my three pages of notes into maybe this time and then two more go-backs. I really hope we can come up with a different opportunity so that we're not just, here's point one, point two, point three, point four, and not really doing what I was hoping to do, what Karen did, which is, this is my big picture item and, you know, my theme, and handle the questions later, which is what she's doing, where she's sending in the questions later, but I think that also reduces transparency, if we're saying to have the conversation here. So, I have allocated over 30 seconds of my time to go back and to share that. This process does not make me feel comfortable, and I feel compelled to throw out too many things at once at this time, but here we go. I'm very excited about some of the issues here that address equity. I want to be sure that we're not doing, you know, what my mom calls putting braces on everyone, when we're talking about, not everybody needs braces, even from the same family. So, we have to really be thoughtful in terms of how we are allocating certain funds. The PSAT, SAT fees, I'm very excited about that, but my question is, who are we determining these students and these schools to be that we are handling this for? And does everybody- And does everybody there really need it? Similarly, with the equity for all, very excited about closing the gap for some of our students because I know many of them live in Mason District. But, when we are determining how to spend that money, I really worry about putting braces on everyone. Not everyone needs this support. So, I'd like for us to be very thoughtful in terms of criteria that is used. You know, I kind of liken this to what we do with Title I. You have some criteria that you use and then you cut a threshold for that. It doesn't have to go all the way out to the bottom. Plus, we can layer on multiple criteria indicators. Similarly, with FCPS ON, I'm going to use another one of my mom's things, don't throw out the baby with the bathwater. We do know that there are some issues that are impacting our students and how FCPS is being utilized. Having said that, not everybody has the benefit of having a computer at home to complete anything that is done. You know, my kid, he doesn't finish word study at school. Come home, sit, pick the four computers that we have at home and work on one of them. Not everybody has that opportunity. So, again, being mindful that while we want to be good stewards of our resources, we also have to realize that not everybody falls into the same category, but also giving some leeway to that we perhaps could be looking at the professional development more than we are in terms of how teachers are applying this resource in classrooms. I've been in classrooms where using that technology is a fabulous addition and not the babysitter that many people think right now that it can serve. And so, I'd like to have that conversation, but my time is up.
Thank you, Riccardi. I will go ahead and take my turn. The first thing that I do want to just share process-wise with my colleagues because it was mentioned, for eight of you coming on board, and it's a very tight window, we don't need to have to solve everything that's going into the, what is the proposed budget to the advertised budget. One of the biggest things at the top macro level is going to be looking at this $3.2 billion ask. Are we comfortable, Ms. Kizgimara said, on the dollar value over what we anticipate we're getting from the county? That's almost a way to start at the top and come down because to Ms. Maron's concern and others, we're going to have time from when we vote February 6th until the Board of Supervisors passes their transfer amount to us in late April, early May, that in that time, we can spend the opportunity, together the 12 of us with the superintendent, doing a deeper dive in how those $3.2 billion are going to be maybe reassigned and reallocated based on where some of the priority is. And I would also say, as someone who served on the board for eight years, the first time I stepped on this board and had to vote on the budget a month later, I didn't turn around and deconstruct a $3.2 billion budget. And I really caution all of you to think about that, too. The high priority pieces, absolutely. I am certainly hearing as your budget chair, FCPS ON is a concern. And I want to echo what everybody said without question. It is so important that we understand what have been the successes at the high school level. This is a costly program. And to Dr. Anderson's point, braces for everyone. We want to close the digital divide. It doesn't mean we put a laptop in every middle skid, middle school child's hands for this next fall. And it has really bothered me that we're sitting here as a school division where we know that the best way children learn is to make sure that we have start times that match their brain and we don't do that. So, we miraculously, as a school division, found tens of millions of dollars, start throwing into an FCPS ON program and we've been told for how long that we can't afford middle school start times. So, I venture to guess if we went surveyed the middle school families in this county that we'd probably be winning the survey on, do you want a healthier start time for your child first? So, those are why I don't feel we're prepared to roll out FCPS ON and start funding it for this coming fall. In my 24 seconds left, I do want to say that I have been advocating that we benchmark the job responsibilities of what our IEAs are doing. They work almost a full-time week, just like our teachers, but they're getting paid at half the salary. So, that to me is not getting them to 50% of a teacher's job. Are they doing only 50% of a teacher's job? Or if they're actually hours to hours delivering more, then that's just artificial. And I will speak more on my go-back.
So, we now have Melanie Maron, followed by Rachna and then Eberar and Karen Kizgimara. Anyone else who's on a go-back, please let me know.
So, thank you for the clarification, first of all, about the AP courses. I wasn't aware that the six courses were across the lifetime of a student's career. So, I think that really takes the pressure off budgetarily and also from a mindfulness perspective. So, I don't think we've mentioned substitute pay yet, but that is so critical and that is a disappointment that I don't see in the budget. We know that we have a sub shortage, we're not paying them enough. I've heard ideas like, can we have a permanent sub at each school to rotate in? That would also really help teachers with their planning time. We know in elementary school, our teachers don't have the planning time. They're supposed to have the 45 minutes of a block of time. So, I think that's sorely missing from this budget and I would love to see a lot more thinking around that. I don't believe you also mentioned our SLIF students who are arriving, older students who might not have been through formal education, who might have low levels of literacy. I don't see anything specifically about serving those students and I would really like to see something more. We can't just lump these kids through with other students who need supports. Research and budget, I think, Dr. Braybrand, you had mentioned the need for, you know, beefing up our research and making sure our data analysis is strong. I really support that because I want to feel like I'm making decisions and the board's making decision based on the best possible data that we can get. So, what does that look like as a part of the budget? I also want to underscore, and I think I saw Mr. Torrey here somewhere today. There he is. Hi. As I read, you know, we are spending $31.4 million to, which our staff, of course, deserves for their benefits for retirement, but this is, these are required costs. And I think it's important for the public to understand that when they see that the cost of health insurance has gone up 5.3%, that's, FCPS has no control over that. And that is a private sector issue that is affecting our public schools. We're spending $31.4 million to support our staff. I think it's a really big issue that we need to put out there. We're not just, you know, a bloated budget here. These are costs that we have to pay our employees. And finally, just on a personal note, I think this is my fifth go-around of the budget. I used to be an advocate, so it's very nice to be on this side and be able to advocate for the things after closely analyzing the budget for so many years. So, thank you.
Now, we have Rachna, followed by Karen Corbett Sanders because we missed her.
And thank you, Ms. Maron. I too am concerned about how we communicate that 18% of this budget ask are fixed costs that we have no control over. And so, I think that's one of the things that we should all, we should have a cheat sheet of all the things that are critical pieces. What does it cost for our salary increases and things like that? There's been a lot of conversations about the IA scales and I think as a next step, it would be helpful if we could actually see the IA scale versus just the point in time, which is $16 and change, because the scale is supposed to be 50% of the total teacher salary. So, at the top of the range, you're talking about $52,000. But, I'd like to understand a little bit more how that scale works and what the plan is to get there and how many people are below that 30,000 level that you mentioned, which I think is a good, a good objective. Secondly, the longevity piece is a really important piece for our teachers. We have at the longevity step, that's where our teachers have invested the most, we've invested the most in their professional development and they've invested the most in their time. And that's where there is a $27,000 delta or $23,000 delta between what Prince William County pays at their top of the scale versus what Fairfax County pays our teachers. And so, that's huge and, and so, we need to talk about that piece is how we're going to address it. Similarly, there was something in here on the ERFC and the unfunded liability where it shows that we are increasing that unfunded liability over time and I am concerned about that. I understand that it probably results in our, because of our infusion in salaries, but I'd like to have a plan as part of a next step on how we're going to address that unfunded liability there. And then, lastly, the Board of Supervisors, just to let everybody know, our objective near term is to see that we have flexibility with the Board of Supervisors, setting the tax rate at a high enough level to allow for the priorities of both the Board of Supervisors and the School Board to be addressed. And so, that's the near-term goal. So, we need to have enough confidence in our ask for them to be able to set that because if they decide to only set maybe a two-penny increase and they've already allocated a penny and a half to affordable housing, that means that we're down to $11 million, guys. And so, those are the conversations that I would urge my colleagues to start having with their peers on the Board of Supervisors of, give us enough flexibility to give, to allow us to have the conversation.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I have Rachna, then followed by Karen Kizgimara.
I just wanted to sort of echo and build on a couple of things. First, I really agree with you, I think she said, Ms. Kizgimara, about needing to sort of look at the big picture, the theme on the budget and same with you, Meghan, about not trying to rewrite a $3.2 million budget 10 days into a job, although there are obviously priorities and things that we all heard about and have constituencies on. To that effect, the one thing I wanted to talk about is, first, on your presentation on page 53, you get, there was a chart that talked about FCPS reduction from 2009 to fiscal year 2021 and also position reduction. And the way I read this chart, it seemed like we were reducing every year, but I know we're not. So, I wanted to get a little more understanding of this chart and I bring that up as a way of speaking to our colleagues on the Board of Supervisors about the fact that I don't think we've caught up to the cuts from 2008. So, in terms of talking about the importance of fully funding the budget, part of it is to talk about it in historical context. So, I'd like to have more information about what this chart represents and sort of the analysis of it, as well as the historical context about, we talk about our, the WABE guide in terms of where we are in poor people's spending and I think that's a way to say, look, not only are we very lean, but frankly, we have all of these things that we still need to do in a special education population that has significant achievement gaps and equity gaps throughout our county. Our poor people spending being so low is not necessarily a good thing because it shows that we may not be spending things that we need to spend on. And I think it's a good thing in a lot of ways, but I think we need to talk about is, are we at the right spot for what we need to do for our programs? The only other thing I'd bring up is in terms of our special education population, I like to see some numbers around our 504 population because they are students that need additional supports, but yet I don't think that's as reflected in our budget as much as I'd like to see in terms of the challenges to our system because our, the 28,000 and change students are students with IEPs and that doesn't include 504. So, I think in terms of another talking point for needs for our budget, talking about the needs of our 504 students. And same with IA pay, I'd like to talk about eventually about IA training and funding for IA training as well. And the IEAs I've spoken to, they would love to have a little more training on doing, especially on the behavioral support and communication support they end up doing in the classroom. But, I do think the big picture on sped compliance versus support, considering sort of the needs of the constituents and things that have went on, would be an important conversation to have. 20 seconds left.
If I could, two quick things. The two big themes from this budget, pay for our people because our people make the difference and support for our students. And we really focused on that wraparound, social, emotional. Those would be the two big themes. I would say, we've been pleased to work with the county and have two years of fully funded budget. We were actually technically off just by a little skosh last year and we worked together and closed ranks and I'm confident that we're going to continue to collaborate and have the Board of Supervisors and you all working with the relationships you're building to continue that collaboration. And I will say, we do need to look, we have the WABE guide, but there's a school district that's lower cost than us, but their superintendent has got a school system half the size asking for double the money in this budget year. So, there are people behind us who are trying to catch up. We need, we've gotten back to having a competitive market position and we need to continue to maintain it. And we need to be sure that we are leading the pack when it comes to support, pay for our people and support for our students. We've been able to do it for many years at a lower cost than some other divisions, but the bottom line is businesses are going to go where great schools and great communities are and that's what Fairfax has always been about supporting and I think we can continue that work with the Board of Supervisors and with this board.
I just want to take my last 20 seconds to respond a little bit to what you said. I like your themes and I'm not saying that we need to spend less per people, so I want to be clear. I just think that there's, there's room to say, there's programs that need to be spent on. But, I do want to say, when you talk about, the two themes are pay our people and support, I would say from what I'm seeing in this on a special education side of things, it seems more about compliance and less about support. And I know that there's pieces of that in both, but I'd like to see more about support in there.
Thank you, Rachna. We now have Eberar, followed by Karen Kizgimara. And then, Board members, if anyone wants a go-back, I need you to signal to us so we can put you on the list. I want to make sure everybody has their opportunity.
Thank you. I wanted to ask for clarification on a couple of things. One is, I know we have the staffing initiatives allocated amount, just clarity maybe on what delineating that looks like and what the process for that's going to look like. And then, I, knowing that this is coming down the pipeline eventually, was interested in seeing like price evaluations for ways of utilizing, ways of converting space or utilizing space or making space. So, for example, I know many of us have heard from the community of, you know, locker rooms, rearranging locker rooms, increasing student privacy, things like that, which may not make their way into this budget. I don't know what that would look like, but would be helpful to have a sense of cost, potentially looking forward or, you know, converting seclusion rooms, maybe if we're going to be moving towards, away from that as a division into places that can be therapeutic for students with special needs, developing healthy habits or just, you know, used as meditation rooms or whatever it is. Just trying to evaluate cost on what options we have in that regard. And then, the third thing is, I'd love to get a sense of what we've done for cost-cutting, whether maybe that's contracts or just like looking at ways that we may have considered or, you know, successfully cut costs to open up room for other initiatives. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, I have Ms. Kizgimara, followed by Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. I'm happy to go behind Ms. Omech because we don't, we like to talk about what we're adding, but we don't like, you know, I do think part of the evidence is being able to say, and we critically looked at what we're doing, what's working, what isn't working because I do think we will be having some robust discussions regarding our budget. I also have another just caveat of concern in having looked at the legislative wants of some of our Fairfax delegation. I think there are a number of unfunded mandates included in that and I think that they are very excited about having taken control and I just wonder what that's going to mean for us. And so, I hope that part of our discussion can be, and also advocacy, is looking at some of those things. A particular amendment by our delegate Keem comes to mind, as to what that could possibly mean. And I do think that we need to look at that and perhaps provide a school system's perspective of what the cost would be, what the weight of that implementation would be, and I just use that as an arbitrary example. With respect to CP, FCPS ON, I want to be clear, I don't have a problem with this program. I do believe that as Board members, we have a fiduciary responsibility. We are the ones that the community expects us to look at the evidence, to gather the research and make sure that we're making a good decision. That's all we're asking for. And I know that people have come to me in the community having heard some of the rhetoric surrounding FCPS and they believe that it's a done deal. And so, I am concerned about that. So, I just wanted to add that and I do have some significant concerns regarding the legislative impact and look forward to those discussions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Kizgimara. I have Mr. Frisch and then anyone else wanted their second go-back? I mean, their first go-back, second to speak? Okay?
Excuse me. Thank you. One of the things that is good about the CIP is that it tells folks how much we actually need to get what we need, you know, that we're $1.5 billion behind what we need just to catch up, right? When FCPS does its budgeting, because of the nature of the way that the budget- When FCPS does its budgeting, because of the nature of the way that the budget is created, that we get the funds from the county, and that we work out those details with the county, and then it comes back, I think people see that we're getting a huge sum of money, and that it doesn't look like we're cutting that much, when in reality, we're limiting our thinking based on how much money we're getting. Not, we're not getting what we need, we're getting what we desperately need. I think it would behoove us to make it clear in our budget documents going forward that this is money to reach certain expectations that we've set, which is one of the reasons why Karen's comment about the strategic plan is so important to me. If we can identify our budgetary expenses by the way that they are achieving our strategic vision as a division, then we can make an argument, those are justifiable expenditures. When we have trouble slotting expenses into things based on their ability to achieve a strategic objective, that might tell us that it's something to reconsider. Now, the public won't see those cuts necessarily happening, because they'll get worked out, and then we'll vote on a budget. But I think it's important to do both. I think it's important to line things up with the strategic plan of the division, and also let the County Board of Supervisors and the taxpayers know, we're spending this much money. And yes, it is an increase over last year. But in real dollars, this is how much we would need just to be on par with where we should be nine years after the recession. And that, we're not even talking about where we'd like to be, where we should be. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. I have Laura Jane. And then if no one else, Dr. Anderson and I will take our final turns.
I just wanted to quickly add to that, that I think when people are looking, and it's why I used FCPS ON, I'm sure, poor Mary Beth is getting hit hammered today, but, is that I don't think people have a sense of where things are in the process. So someone, I had a constituent call me and say, oh, FCPS ON for middle school is only going to cost 1.1 million dollars, that's so much less than I thought. And I said, no, no, it's 1.1 of, and I know these numbers are not matching up perfectly with what was in the presentation, but of 19.7 million dollars. That our high school amount that we're asking for this year, the 2.8, is of 44.9 million dollars. So I think it is important for us, especially for what are big-ticket budgetary items, for people to see, even if it's in parentheses, that this is a part of a whole. So if you want to see this program, because that 1.1 does nothing if down the road, we can't get to 19.7 because of whatever happens in the world between then and now. So I just want people to understand that, like, you're buying a piece of something with some of these budget items, we are not fixing or able to get the whole program dealt with.
If I could, you know, you made a comment, and this is our first work session, so I just want to say it. I applaud this board already with the tone and the collaborative spirit that I've seen exist at the first School Board meeting led by Chairman Karen Corbett Sanders, and at this work session, first led by Tammy Darrenack-Kofax, and now with Meghan McLaughlin. This tone, we don't need to personalize this budget and the budget priorities, yes, there's different departments that represent different pieces of the budget, you saw Lee break it out by chiefs. But it's not about, did Marty get more than Francisco, or more or less than Francis? It's about what's doing the right thing for the division. And everybody on this staff is committed to making Fairfax County Public Schools the premier school district in the country, and working with you. So one of the things we're wanting to do as staff in this new board is set the tone. We don't want to personalize it with you, and we hope that it doesn't become personalized with us either. And that we stay committed, that we're both groups of professionals focused on trying to do the right thing for kids in the system. And you're going to have questions, you may agree with us, you may disagree with us, but it's done in a respectful, positive tone. And I feel that tone has been highlighted both at the meeting Thursday night and at the work session today. And I am very, very, very hopeful that we can continue that as we move along. There will be a lot of big topics and a lot of big passions, but sometimes the how is just as important as the what, as groups come together. Even you all talking about the process of the budget, this is the way the old board did it, not quite like it completely, but quickly pivoted to, we'll talk about that later, we'll work in this parameter now, that's the same spirit that you all are doing that we want to do with you two as we move forward. So, thank you for bringing that up, and I, we're looking forward to working with you on this budget.
Then if no one else, I'll have Dr. Anderson take her turn, and then I will take mine.
I have a few clarifying questions. On pages 17 and 19, trades for tomorrow, I'm a little bit confused, because one has a .2 million dollar expenditure for one FTE, the other on page 19 has another .2 with two FTEs. Can somebody walk me through that a little bit, please?
One is, the first one is the startup money that was allocated at fiscal 19-year end, and so that gets those recurring funds into the fiscal 21 budget, because it was added to the fiscal 20. And then the other is to trades positions within the Department of Facilities and Transportation.
And to better just put a distinct on that, the startup money was around focused on student internships. The new money is focused on really a permanent apprenticeship job, a journeyman job, which is what we used to have in the county, where you went from student in a class, to getting an internship, to getting hired in this apprentice-level, full-time employee position. So that's the difference.
I'm doing my own time and asking my questions. My other question is regarding the substance abuse prevention specialists. There were some that were already in the budget, and there's an increase in the proposed budget. I just would like some information in terms of, what have we seen in terms of the impact of these positions?
You know, Teresa may be able to speak to it generally, if not, we can certainly have all that information for next week.
Sure, I'll just give a high-level response at this point. We are working with the county epidemiologists and gathering information. So we should have some detailed information at some point about what our, we know what our SAPs are doing, however, we'll have more detailed information about, we have some high-level information, for example, how many students have been connected to the Community Services Board, that type of data now, we could certainly share with you in a Brabrean briefing, but more detailed information, the epidemiologists are doing a very deep dive on our SAPs.
Thank you. My other, oh, thank you. The other piece, I think this has been said, but I want to be sure that I also throw my support out for the elementary special education chairs. I know I talked about this on Thursday. I'm waiting with bated breath to see how we are going to determine which schools have access to this resource, and also maybe how we can even maximize the resource for the schools at that upper end. Because I know the impact of having a high special education population in an elementary school without the appropriate support. And I also, I'm very glad that Roshna brought this up, because I'd like for those numbers to also not include the self-contained students, because that has a separate kind of bucket of support, and we would not want it to mask the problems that are present. One of the other things that I want to be sure that I say again, we have to have those conversations regarding the middle school start times, because it really impacts so many of those goals we have for our students. And there may be some opportunity to trade off some other priority, or some, not other priorities, some other issues, some other expenditures, in order to have that conversation. Because no matter how great the supports are, if our kids can't access them because they're just physiologically not ready, it really is going to be an uphill battle. So I wanted to throw that in there. A clarifying question that I could perhaps get an answer to right now, 504 being a function of the general education program, would impact dollars in what way?
Well, I think your question, 504 is a general education program, and typically, I don't know, there's, do we, can we use any special ed funds? I guess there's a, is there a portion of the IDEA that we can use to do RTI? And I don't know, Teresa, you want to take that one?
We can use what's termed our coordinated early intervention services, we are voluntary for that, and we do use up to 15% of our IDEA funding to support students in general education at tier two and tier three levels. That may or may not impact students with a 504, but certainly happy to have some further discussion about it.
Yeah. But, Dr. Anderson, one thing, and I know this was already, I think, something that Roshna asked for, our 504 numbers have been growing, we can provide you that information by school, and that does represent additional workload. It's supporting our students, but it does represent additional workload to our teachers. And this is part of what our teachers are facing, more IEPs than ever in the classroom, and more 504s than ever, to be able to meet those expectations, to be able to facilitate and communicate with parents. And so those are real challenges that didn't exist even five years ago compared to now. There's been real growth in both of those, so we'd be glad to get that info to you. Dr. Doran, or Teresa, did you want to add something to that?
Just to respond to about the 504 chairs, we, the special ed chairs, sorry, the special ed elementary chair positions, we did look at quite a bit of data and workload and what that would look like. Our team even ran regression charts. We had some very interesting discussions, because what we thought or assumed we might see didn't necessarily happen. For example, just because a school had the highest special ed population at the elementary level, did not mean they had the highest number of local screening meetings, et cetera. So we had some very interesting data, and as of today, we've decided that those schools will be selected by the number of special education students that they would have in the building.
And we'll have more details around that?
Sure, we can have additional conversations. And I think as Ms. Corbett Sanders said earlier, or maybe Ms. McLaughlin, while the big issue between now and February 6th is just the overall ask in the categories, there's certainly time, and we're already having discussions at chairs about having more time to really go through the budget over the spring, so then in May, you can have additional refinements to this budget based on some of the discussions you've already started today.
Okay. And I think my last question was, is regarding the cultural responsiveness resource teacher, I know somebody talked about this earlier. I am not clear on the duties and roles of this position and whether it's duplicative. Can somebody shed some light? Is this a short one?
Do we want to do that now, or have it for next week? You got it? Okay, Kathleen?
Okay, hopefully this will be really quick. Hi. The cultural responsiveness resource teacher, first of all, we do not currently have one. We do have equity and cultural responsiveness specialists that are assigned to each of our regions. This position will support professional development for teachers and other instructional staff around those very concepts. We have cohorts that take place over four full days to take a deep dive into the content of equity and cultural responsiveness, so that teachers are armed and prepared to then support colleagues and students in their schools. The position is mainly to provide professional development, so it's the cohort model, but there are also many other professional development opportunities that we offer, including for our equity leads, which we have one for each of our schools, at least one for each of our schools, in some cases it's more than one, but to also help to support the professional development for the equity leads.
Thank you. Thank, I'm sorry, thank you. My last question, let me start my time. My last question is regarding a consideration for substitute pay, because we do know that impacts substitute acquisition. I remember several years ago in Loudoun County, when the pay was cut from one amount to the next, it was impossible to get subs in the building, and we could point to that variable as being the culprit. And I know it equally is taxing here for our staff, so anything we can do in that area, I would appreciate, as well as examining the IA pay, because it is difficult to staff those hard positions, and when they leave, because they cannot sustain themselves, it's really heartbreaking. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take my go-back, and then I did have one Board member who wants to have another go-back. I guess, at a macro level, what I wanted to share with my colleagues is that one of the things we've had to wrestle with the Board of Supervisors in my eight years on the Board, is that being mindful that when we talk about one Fairfax, we're also talking about one Fairfax in terms of serving our community. And county services have also gone through the recession and gone through the cuts, and employees had pay freezes. And so, anything that we do on this half side of the ledger, since we typically get about 52% of the tax revenue in Fairfax County, and county services get the others, this is where the collaboration with the Board of Supervisors is so important. Step increases, the market scale adjustments, those are all really tied together. I have always said, if there's a raise happening on the county side, it needs to be matched and funded by the Board of Supervisors for our people. And so it goes both ways. We want to address those step freezes that happened years ago, understand, the county's got to find the money to do that for county employees too. And that's going to be something that they're going to have to be wrestling with. So I just wanted to bring that big picture to it. The other concern I have is that maybe going into our next work session, when you look at slide, I believe it's six, or no, it's actually slide five, where it was kind of broken out, and then Lee and her team gave us more breakouts from there. I mean, other than the 106 million in additional dollars that we'd be looking at salary benefits, and that will fluctuate to some degree based on what the county executive determines the overall revenue will be, and what they can afford to do, again, to the county side, and what we're going to be able to afford on our side. But for the other 65 million dollars, I just want to share with my colleagues, it's not just the 6 million that the superintendent put aside for strategic initiatives. It's, this is 65 million more dollars on how we're going to spend it. And I've really appreciated all of you who've brought up the wants versus needs component. There are a lot of amazing things in Dr. Brabran's proposed budget, and I say that because we own the advertised budget. And it's not just the Board of Supervisors, the public is going to be looking to us. And I know we're going to need a lot more time than February 6th to figure all of that out. And so I almost want to prepare Dr. Brabran and his team that it is not sacrosanct. When we publish the advertised budget, there may need to be some adjustments in where we're going to target our funds. Because I really do have a lot of concerns on some of the really nice things that we talk about doing in this very budget, and the things that we're still not doing. There's nothing in here about school nurses. I mentioned to you last Thursday that we were going to need the briefing that the prior board directed the superintendent to come back and give to us, and it's not here in the budget, and we don't have anything still even today. So, Dr. Brabran, that'll be my next step. And so, at this point, Ms. Saismarhiser, you're welcome to have another go-back.
Sorry, I apologize. Just very quickly, I had asked on Thursday, and I forgot to get back to it, the Office of School Support expansion. I was just curious to learn a little more about what that is and the purpose of that.
Dr. Doran?
Well, the Office of School Support expansion is bringing out the work that we're doing in Office of School Support into a Department of School Improvement and Supports. And underneath that department, we would continue the work of our Office of School Support. In addition to collaborate around the work in supporting our schools, there would also be the Office of Student Testing, working in that department. Also, our office, it's not an office, it's a component from Special Services that's focused on multi-tiered systems of support, to bring that as well in alignment with the work we're doing to support our schools. And then also to look at our alternative school programs that we have currently in DSS as well, being brought into the Department of School Improvement and Supports. So it's trying to align various components that are currently either, one is in IS, the Office of Student Testing, the others two that are in Department of Special Services, and bring those all aligned into one Department of School Improvement and Supports.
I guess, that's, what's the sort of the unifying theme for the purpose of sort of real organizing?
So, the unifying theme is to expand and continue the work we've been doing through our Office of School Support, which is our Project Momentum work, and to really be able to continue to do that for all schools with additional areas that we have seen in our supports and other offices, to more so collaborate and not have siloed off, and to be more of a streamlined approach to continue the model of Project Momentum, where we would look at all of our schools that have SOA indicators needing extra support, looking at our data, and really being able to target them in a very collaborative way.
Thank you. One last question on that. When you're looking at the schools to choose, or the schools that need extra support, are you looking sort of through program placement in terms of trying to break down which areas of need? So, you know, schools that may have an AAP center may not, overall, seem like there's as much need. So that's probably more detail you need now, but that's just sort of questions, I'd like to know more about how these schools are chosen and the...
Sure, and we can talk, show you a little bit more. Sure, and we can talk, show you a little bit more. There's definitely a formula and a way we look at those things, but that definitely is more of a conversation. I can show you some more about that.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Brabran, I'm, I'm taking my second go back, because one of the things I asked last Thursday night was to understand from the High School Principals Association, I understood that they are really asking for funding for IAs to help with in-school suspension coverage. So are you prepared to be able to speak about that a little bit now? I think it was going to be $800,000, and where your mindset is on that proposal of theirs.
Two of the associations this year focused on one priority. Elementary was principal pay, and middle school was middle school cameras. The high school folks had a couple of things. They had IAs, and they also had the ADSA position, the Assistant Athletic Director position, or Director of Student Athletics and Activities position. I honored the top request of every one of the principal associations. With the high schools, it was balancing the IA versus the, the ADSA, and what I decided to put in the budget was the ADSA, because it was being traded out in almost every single school. I didn't get the whole way, and I know a few of the principals have already shared with me, they were disappointed they didn't get the .5, right, because we currently give a dedicated .5 to the ADSA, and I only added .25. That gets them to .75. They still would have to trade for the other .25. But I didn't give, elementary principals wanted AP parity. I don't have it in this budget. I would propose it for next year. And middle school principals' cameras, I found one-time funding, which the board approved, which didn't get all middle schools to get cameras, but funded an additional eight, and there's a remaining, I think, 18, so almost halfway. So, the board certainly can look at how, how can we accelerate some of the budget proposals that you like. I heard a couple of board members say, hey, I love the chair idea, but just 70 schools, there's more. So there are a few things that I set up as phase-ins that could be accelerated. That would be something I think the board can say. But the focus, in my view, was I was trying to look at what the top party was, and I thought the ADSA position was a more important one than the IA. Each school's disciplinary piece really varies a little more dramatically than what I thought the ADSA position, which is something traded in almost every school.
Okay. The other thing is, for the next budget work session, are you and your staff able to bring back what had been a prior board directive on what is our plan with closing the gap on school nurses, as well as what is our game plan for middle school start times?
Sure, we can work on what those are. I, I, yeah, I'll have to go back and check with, yes, the answer's yes. And middle school start times, I'd already shared with the board on Thursday, that while I didn't present it in the budget, we can schedule that work session. And I, and I do want to just say something, because I know middle school start times has come up. I, I just want to be clear to this new board, that the prior board did not direct me to implement middle school start times. That's just my, I mean, maybe I missed it, but transparency for, for folks returning. I was never directed. I came in, and that work had been done already around changing high school start times. This past fall, there were some board members going, hey, I know we didn't make it a priority, but can you get it done? To get it done is something we can talk about, and, and we have the plans to share, and we'll work to share those with you. But I don't want, I don't want it, from where we have sat, that this was the top priority of the board. The top priority of the board to me in the last three years that was made clear, was get our teacher pay back to where it was. I think Ms. Darnatt Kofax earlier in this work session said there was a five-year plan. I got here and went, five-year plan, we need to make that quicker. We did in three years what had been a five-year plan, working with the board, so. Right. And then, right at the end of doing the teacher pay, we started a three-year, not a five-year, but a three-year plan for IA, and this board I hear saying, let's, let's accelerate that. So we're more than welcome to start to accelerate some of the priorities that you saw marked down here. And if middle school start times is one of those, we can again, put that in front of you well before time to make the final, final budget in May.
So, Dr. Brabran, I appreciate that response. I know you have not only juggling 12 school board members, but, you know, 28,000 full-time employees. But I will ask our clerk of the board to please pull the board's directive that we'd had on middle school start times, because I'm pretty clear that what we'd asked was a follow-on request. It, it wasn't something we brought to you in the fall. It was at the, the budget we passed in May, that simply said, we wanted to get this effort started, and we knew it was going to take studying it, and finding, costing it out, and determining what plans are there, and that we were very mindful that you couldn't do that in just a few months. What happened is Ms. Evans asked you, before she was leaving the board, where do we stand with that board directive? So I want my colleagues to know, it was a board directive, and we're sensitive that you've had a lot on your plate.
No. And if I did misinterpret it, I apologize in advance. I, I, I'll go back, and I'll certainly work with the chair and vice chair, and we'll figure out how to get that to you all.
Thank you. Finally, the only other thing I would ask to Madam Clerk, put on the next steps from me, is that I would say, essentially from slides eight, slides nine, 10, 11, and 12, I would really like for the Financial Services Office to work with Dr. Brabran. We need the costing out and greater details. For example, on slide 11, where it says all the different positions, which I really appreciate you listing there, at 17.8 million. But I don't, I want to see the cost for those, because you've got 17.8 million, but we don't have the numbers on how you arrive at that, because that might affect what we think is a budget priority, or a want versus a need. And then, when you look at the next slide 10, where it just says year-end recurring items at 2.6 million, again, we need to know what the 2.6 million is. And then, on slide 11, or as slide 12, you give us some costing and some descriptions, but again, we don't know what's staffing positions versus what's program costs. So some more details of the next work session.
We can work on that, sure.
Okay. At this point, I'm, Dr. Anderson has her final go back, and then we will check next steps, and board, board members will get, oh, Ms. Kies-Kammara, you go right ahead.
This is just really quick, because I said it on Thursday, and I think it would probably be missed as a next step, but Dr. Brabran, I think you'll recall when we received our reports on the discipline study, that there were phases of things that needed to be put into place. And so we, we took some initial steps, but I am concerned about being able to follow up on that, especially if there is any cost associated with that. So I, I just, as a next step, or perhaps if you want to speak to, I want to make sure that this board has an opportunity to consider that.
Yep, we have that. Dr. Doran, do you want to talk generally or next week?
Yeah, we can provide that in writing. There were several budget resource recommendations, so we can provide an update what's been done, and what's still not been done in writing.
Ms. Kies-Kammara, I'm glad you brought that up, because the other thing the board had asked was that there was going to be annual training for the hearings office and any other relevant staff and/or board members on best practices. And I have, we haven't received an update, so we'll need that in the Brabran briefing. At this point, was there anybody, oh, Dr. Anderson, you would like to have your final go back, and then we'll bring up Ms., the next steps, Madam Clerk.
Just a few clarifying questions again. The 90.5 positions that are going to now be identified in the budget, would we be able to get a sense of what positions these are? Not, it doesn't have to be to the, to the person level, just maybe the group of positions, or the central office, should I?
Sure, we, we have something in the budget that breaks it down by department and types of positions, I believe.
Yes, there's, there's information, there's a chart in the appendix that they got as part of the superintendent's proposed budget presentation, that identifies each of those 90 positions and what they are by department. And there's, I think there's something in the budget as well, in the appendix.
I apologize if I missed that. One other question on page 19, I think this is slide 10 of the packet that we have, there's a .2 million for a student information analyst. Can you, it says includes a 1.0 student information analyst. That just seems awfully high to just be salary. Can I get some more detail in terms of what else is included for that .2?
That's a mistake, and instead of student information system architect, it should say domain architect. That was one of the last changes we made, and apparently we didn't catch it everywhere.
Is that a .2 million dollar position?
It's over 150, because we round to the nearest.
Okay.
So it rounds to .2. But we will provide that as the detail that Ms. McLaughlin asked for, that would have that detail in it as far as the exact dollar amount for each of those positions on that page.
And I should assume, or maybe I shouldn't, that the .2 for the 1.0 assistant director position is also just rounded up from 150?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, here we go, on the next steps. And board members, as I remember the process, I, what I'd really like for you to do is just read it to make sure it looks accurate. Although normally, we would have had the people's names there, so people would know to review it, because the goal is that the superintendent can review these with the chair and vice chair, just to triage them and determine which ones can get done quickly, and which ones may take a little more time or need more clarity. So, we're going to begin with 229. Does anyone recognize who's that, whose question that was? So.
What this is, is last year, we asked for a growth in each one of our areas of the strategic plan by X, from, you know, dollar X to dollar Y this year. So just crosswalk, how are, what's the aggregate between the two years? So you have three point, last year was 3.0, or 3.1, 3.0, now it's 3.2. Let's look category by category where the growth is.
Yeah, we can do that.
Then, the next one is provide more detail on what is included in the 15.4 million for the.
Salary enhancements.
Salary enhancements, because it's there, and the one above it has a note to go and look at the index, or in the appendix. That one is just out there as 15.4 million with no description of really what it is.
We'll follow up.
And then, the next one is really, for want of a better term, it's a marketing term, a marketing effort, and I think Ms. Marin also raised it when she spoke about it. But 18% of the increase this year, guys, is associated with things that we have no control over. So 18, so one out of every $5, almost. So that's something that we need to be able to clearly communicate.
We can do that.
And then, on the IA pay scale, I think there are a couple of different ones on that. I know that Ms. Cohen, and Mr. Frisch, and just about everybody talked about it. What would be helpful is to do that IA pay scale. What is the full scale for all the different steps? So what they make at each level? What's the plan to get to where they are at, where they get to 50%? And how many of them are currently earning less than $30,000 a year? Does that bring everybody's questions into one?
I do want to provide clarification for our colleagues. One of the challenges we've been having, we talk about living wage, is the living wage study that was done up in Massachusetts, was based on just, this is what your hourly pay is. We provide benefits in addition to the pay, and that is something that has to be factored into total compensation. So when we're talking about living wage, that's more information we're going to need from the superintendents. We have, you know, data-driven conversations with our employees. I'm not going to defend what the, what their current pay is. It most likely should be higher, but I want everybody mindful that we do pay more than technically what just the wage itself is saying.
And when they, it's 20 hours or more. So it's not full-time employees that are making, that are getting all of our, getting the benefits.
Less than full-time will still get benefits, yes. Mr. Frisch, you wanted to clarify?
Yeah.
So what I'm asking for is actually the real, the number of employees we're talking about at each level of the scale, so that you know what, what the scope of the, of the challenge is to get to that.
Yeah, the only thing I would add, since we're sort of trying to combine our two, is that, I mean, we also, but there is the HR piece of like, I mean, it's true with any of the positions we offer, right? Like, this is your salary, and this is your, so, I mean, my concern is that we're still, we don't know necessarily what the impact is unless, you know, I know there's data for people who don't take positions, why they didn't take them, but I, I feel like we're just missing that piece of like, what does that overall number mean in terms of full picture of, of who's taking these jobs, who's able to keep these jobs?
That's what I'm trying to get to with broader than what we, what we have in here, is we need to know what, how many people are being impacted? Are there IA jobs that are not being filled? What is the current scale, and how many are, how many employees are at each scale?
That'll hit the longevity piece too, right?
Right, well, and the longevity piece, the big challenge there is, the longevity piece gets us to the teachers. They're not, the IAs also are part of the longevity, but they're not, they're worried about just getting their initial scales up.
Right, right, right. No, but I'm just saying, that would also give us a piece of what scale, you know, where you are is also going to tell us a piece of how long you've maintained that job too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Alice, you wanted to speak?
I just wanted to point out to board members, on page 57 of the package we gave you, there is a CIS scale, and it shows the number of FTEs that are on each scale and each lane. And so I just want it, just, that's just another piece of information to share.
What, what, what we've heard from this, what I've heard from this, and Helen, I see you're here, is an analysis of the IA, the pay scale, the vacancies, our turnover rate, how many are currently under $25,000 in pay, and what is a plan? We have, we're in the, this budget right now is the second year of a three-year plan to get to 25,000. I hear more than one board member saying, present a plan to get to 30,000. That, that's a multi-year plan. At least, that's what I heard. You said, what other recommendations can be done? I heard something to go beyond just the getting to 50%, that we can show you, and then the board decides whether to, again, like other things, accelerate something that we put a marker down. This, this prior board did put a marker down to start to address IA pay. Is it, is it enough? Is it quick enough? And we can, we can show those plans.
Well, and I will, I'll work with Mr. Frisch, because this is something I feel very strongly about and have asked. We need to benchmark their job responsibilities and the things they're doing, because 25 is an artificial number. So it's at least getting to there, Dr. Brabran, but I think what you're hearing is, I don't even want it to be three years to 30, because that's a really nice tagline. What I want it to be is, are we compensating them for the value and the responsibility of the work they're doing?
And 30,000 is still not a surviving wage, just for.
And the 25 is the entry. It's, you know, if, if they're with us, day one, they walk in, it's 25. But if we're talking about the 25, step 25 for teachers, and step 25 for your IA should be, what we had asked for was half of that, which would have put them at 52.
I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I, I think I just want to make sure what we're all saying is, it's artificial right now to say they should be paid 50% of a teacher. They may be doing 2/3 of a teacher's job, and so that's a component we're going to need.
And also, just one thing I want to throw out there, is I feel like, what I hear sometimes is that, in terms of looking at vacancies, is that how many of the vacancies are actual positions that have been identified as a need and advertised and not filled, versus how many are vacancies of, I'm going to say, students with disabilities not getting supports they need in inclusive settings, because there was lack of IAs, and/or it'd be good to hear some conversations with principals about how does it bleed down into IEP processes?
Right, there could be categories of IAs, and I'll work with Dr. Nixon to see the difference between general ed IAs and special education IAs, and whether the vacancy rate is different for that, which I believe it may be, so.
Well, and also whether it's, again, a vacancy that's been identified as a need, or the need isn't being identified because of the vacancy.
I will say this, we, we get it. A full analysis of everything IA will bring to the board, and you guys can spend some, some time, and some plans around it, some recommendations.
Yeah, and I, I just have to say, this is the daughter of a teacher. My comment earlier isn't that IAs do 2/3 of a teacher's job. What a teacher does is so very complex and different from an IA. What I meant is, the hours that they're spending in the building, we have to be cognizant of the work time they're putting in, but I'm not equating the two jobs.
The next one is. The next one is, we have an increasing unfunded liability for the ERFC. And because that is growing, we need to have a plan to address that increasing unfunded liability. And it doesn't have to be done in this budget, but it's something that came to light in this budget and therefore is needed.
Okay, provide numbers about the 504 population in the budget. Show any increases by school. Is that clear for you, Dr. Braybrandt?
Yep.
Okay. 235 says include some history on reductions that have been made in the budget this year and last year. Cost savings that we've identified and achieved. Yes, Ms. Amish?
Yeah, to clarify that, I think, you know, that's, that's helpful context. But I think it's also just an understanding of what was done, the cycle, the evaluation, potentially the process to, to determine those areas. I think, you know, that's not quite, that doesn't quite capture that.
The analysis that took place.
Right.
So, I guess, if, so our clerk is working to try and maybe capture that better. So if you can review that and see, or just provide the language you want.
The, the reference on this question was the, it's the appendix in the School Board, I mean, in the superintendent's presentation, that showed a bar chart of reductions. And so it...
So it doesn't provide the details?
No, it's not that. It's that if you, like, it shows that Fiscal 21 proposed that we cut the budget 19.1 million. Well, that's just the base savings that we, that we showed on the salaries. That wasn't a review, that's just the base savings from Fiscal 20 positions.
We understand that. I think what, I think what Amish, Ms. Amish was trying to say is that we want to be able to demonstrate to the Board Supervisors that when we look at our budgets, it's not just how we're going to spend more money. It's what cost savings or efficiencies did we find? And let's detail those so that they understand, we just didn't look about layering more money on.
I'd actually brought this up, I brought this chart up. And one of my concerns on that chart was, was wanting to show what, how have we been sort of cost-effective? But also to illustrate a little bit of how we haven't caught up to where we were in 2008, and how that's potentially impacted our school system in a negative way.
I, I understand what you're looking for in this, and we can provide the additional analysis.
Great, thank you. On 236, share information about plan for closing the gap on the number of school nurses and middle school start times. Yeah, I, I think it would just should say for 236 is, provide the Board with an update on the Board directives related to increasing school nurses and middle school start times. Does that make sense, Dr. Braybrandt?
Yes.
Okay. 237, provide detailed costs on slide, yeah, not just costs though, provide detailed information in costs. And then 238 is provide update on working through phases in discipline study. I think it was an update on, probably an update on, on the... Yeah, Karen?
I, I believe it was the resources related to the, when we presented an equity plan. Dr. Duran presented the equity plan. Got it. Right, there was the discipline study and recommendations from that and phased in services.
So the resources, and I would just say, and costs. Resources and costs related to the equity plan. And I see Ms. Kofax and Ms. Tolan, you both have something you wanted to ask.
Yes, specifically, you know, as I said, I had had a laundry list on Thursday. Where is that information being stored? Did you take notes on it, you know?
So Ms. Burden took notes of all of it, shared it with the leadership team members. You know...
Because I don't feel like I need to add my steps that I talked about then.
Right, we, we will do our best, obviously, to take those questions. I guess we just need to decide now. We'll just try to take those notes, the ones that were questions, and we'll add them as budget questions. Is that what, Lee? That's the easiest thing to do. And then afterward, if we somehow didn't get it, then we can make sure we do catch it the next time around at the work session.
Dr. Braybrandt, I'd like an interim step, Ms. Burden. I'd like the notes from Thursday. If Dr. Braybrandt can send an email, not a Braybrandt briefing, because I just want it to be an email that says, here are the questions that we took from Thursday evening. This way Board members can look at it and see if anything's missing.
We can do that for you tomorrow.
It's okay if it, yeah, thank you. It's Tolan, and then it looks like Ms. Pakarski has it. You had signaled?
Yes, I just, one of the things we talked about around the CIP, and then I mentioned here, was having Mr. Plattenberg maybe look at support he needs for his Office of Planning around the capacity numbers. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Support for Office of Planning, okay?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Tolan. That's an important question, I know several of us were concerned about. Ms. Pakarski?
I don't see anything up here about FCPS ON that several of us talked about. So I'd like to put something, and we can work on the, on the wording of this, but maybe provide details about the rollout of the high school, lessons learned, the fees, structure, and maybe an assessment, I guess, of the programmatic goals and where we are with that? No? Sure?
I would add to that, what I had mentioned when I first spoke about this was a comparison of what was briefed to this Board as the original investment plan versus what was contracted last year compared to, and then what is planned now. So it shows the continuum of how that investment strategy has evolved, because there were a number of us who were a little surprised at the level of contracting last year that went into this. And so this will allow us to have a much more comprehensive view of how, and we understand, it is a work in progress. This is something that we are building as we're flying it.
That's, that's the problem. I don't think this Board supports building as we fly it, and that's what we've got to capture here. Mr. Frisch?
I'll learn, I promise. So, nothing in there about funding somebody to help me press the microphone button. For 239, thank you. For, yeah, for number 239, I had mentioned the 1.1 million dollars that we charged families for support with these computers. It'd be nice to know what families are being impacted by that. And, and the second thing for like 240, I had asked if, if we're budgeting or proposing to budget 800,000 for an equity investment at the high school level for athletics and other activities, how much it would cost for an expansion to middle and elementary school?
We can do that, and we have that, yep.
But it's, Mr. Frisch, I'm glad you brought that up. Originally with the 800,000, that was based on giving certain amount of dollars for every FRM student in our high schools, and it went down through all of our 25 high schools. And the question was raised of not all of our high schools need that funding. So just like with Title I, there might need to be a threshold, so...
I get that the number that we get back may, you know, be allocated in a very different way than what we're thinking. But at least it's on the same kind of estimation.
Apples for apples.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Amish?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure how to go about this, because almost nothing I said is reflected in this list. But I, I wanted to just highlight a couple of things. One, I mentioned, you know, staffing initiatives, placeholder. What, I mean, going, what's the process for that going to look like? I think that's a follow-up point.
For, so like for question 241, we wanted to have captured and listed that, what will be the process? So creating question 241. Okay.
I mean, there are a good number of points, I don't know.
Oh, no, Ms. Amish, this is a, Ms. Amish, this is the perfect time, what you're doing right now. If it's not captured up there, we want to capture it. So take your time and just, once she's done with Mr. Frisch, we'll, go ahead.
Abra, if I could do one thing while we're waiting, just in that second, the way we set up the 6 million last year, before the advertised, you don't have to commit to that 6 million like some other. We don't have the program detail in the budget for those, right? We'll bring them to you at the next work sessions. In fact, what happened, Board members made final decisions on that 6 million in May. So it's left as a placeholder. And so I just want you to know, even when you vote in February, you don't have to commit on any of those things in there. There's simply, it's a $6 million placeholder, and then the Board can have final tweaks or changes, dramatic changes, depending on what, what happens.
I mean, that's useful. It could be a delayed process, I guess. I mean, we don't have to think about that right now.
It's, it's recognizing...
You have flexibility.
I think it is the Board recognizing that we know that by May, we're going to solidify and come together in recognizing whatever strategic initiatives are going to be. And so this was just sort of best thinking right now, when this goes over to the public and the Board of Supervisors. But we'll be okay to, to really refine that. And we'll, and we'll come together as a Board to figure out what that process will be for having that in the final budget.
Right, and, and if I could just, like, for what Carl had said, like, I heard a lot of pauses about the equity fee, and I put that in as a placeholder. You don't have to have that all detailed out yet. Do you want to vote on middle or elementary before February 6? You can say, hmm, that's definitely an interesting concept. And again, we put that in to just really have some stuff that the Board gets more time to sort of pull through. The Board last year added AARTs is one of the things in elementary school. Again, it wasn't put...
Advanced Academic Resource Teachers.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Advanced Academic Resource Teachers. So that, the one difference I would say for that 6 million is, it's not in the budget book in detail. It's not solidified yet, and it just gives you a little more room to work through it in the process.
Okay, yeah, I think...
All right, so we're, just Board members understand, I'm just trying to be fair to everybody. I want Ms. Amish to get her questions in, and then we will be done.
I appreciate that. No, so, okay, so that one we can forego for now. There was the point on the freeze that occurred in pay, in retirement pay for several years, if that could be retroactively addressed. I also raised the point on delineating specific...
No, we're just not sure what you mean by that, about the freeze on retirement?
Yeah, I can provide more information about the specific timeframe that that occurred. But essentially...
When somebody goes to retire and there were frozen steps that didn't happen?
But they were promised, you know, that money, yeah. Contractually.
We can address it.
Okay. And then there was also the point on delineating specific amounts for equity inclusion-based PD. So whether that's restorative justice, implicit bias. I'd love to see, you know, specific dollars dedicated to that within the larger PD budget, just seeing how that's been thought through.
Right, you want a detailed review of that PD budget ask?
Right.
Right, which was like $400,000. Tease that out in some greater detail.
Thank you.
Yes.
So that we can see that those dollars are specifically dedicated to things.
Yeah, Ms. Waltz isn't here, but Dr. Duran is, and we'll be able to follow up.
And then there was the piece on ratios. What would it cost for us to be at best practice levels? We, I mean, I mentioned mental health is one example of that, but we talked about, you know, parent liaisons and, I mean, nurses are an example of that too, which was mentioned before. Social workers, you know, what would, yeah, what would it cost for us to get to best practices on, on that? I believe those were the various things, but, oh, and then there was the spaces, right? Costs of converting spaces and increasing privacy in spaces. Again, if we don't discuss it now, that's fine, but I know it's coming, so we might as well look into it. And I would appreciate inclusion of everyone's points in the future.
And Abra, on the, the best practice level, we'll work on giving you what best practice is. What I know we can also add is what the Governor and what the Board of Education have proposed as potential standards. Right, after they reverse the cap, and even the Board of Education has come out with new prescribed SOQs. We can definitely show you what those ratios look like and the cost for those, in addition to our own best practice research review.
And I'm, I'm assuming that includes psychologists and social workers?
On 243, Madam Clerk, it will be reading best practice levels for psychologists, social workers, counselors, school nurses.
And it's school support personnel. But, yeah, there are best practice levels that we're significantly under right now, so...
Are you including like SLPs and all of that in there? Because the best practice for SLPs are written out there, and in terms of where we're at, and... I mean, that seems like a really, I just, the ones I bring that up is...
I think what she's saying is that we, we, if we want to have a holistic understanding at the school-based level, where we're supposed to be focusing our funding and resources, how below are we on what's identified as best practice staffing?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I was just curious in terms of how broad are we going with, is it all support staffing? Is it, you know, ATS? Is it SLPs? Is it, or, I mean, what are we looking at in terms of? I think it's a good idea, I'm just curious how broad it goes.
We'll take a draft and share with what we've got, and then you can tell us if it's not expansive enough. That's what I would share.
There was the, also the point I made on textbooks, that wasn't included at all. I don't know if there was the, you know, the 9.4 million, you know, that...
Yeah, I think, Madam Clerk...
Yeah, I didn't...
I, I understand, but I think certainly what's helpful is when we're sitting in a work session, if Board members are asking the questions, I don't, I'm not going to translate how Ms. Burden's shop handles it, but I do want to make sure that if we've asked it here, it's getting listed up here.
So, Abra, on that one, could it be just review potential efficiencies for our textbook, our textbook dollars, or allocated?
Potential alternatives, to be honest with you.
Or alternatives, efficiencies, alternatives?
Yeah, and me, and moving forward, I think it would be helpful, yeah, I guess I don't want things that folks mentioned, that I mentioned, to kind of go into the ether. So I don't know how, how we can go about potentially, you know, you, you mentioned questions are different than follow-up. Maybe there's a way to designate those two categories. But I, I guess that's related to process, which we'll hopefully be discussing.
Correct. I think that in particular, when we are doing a budget work session, when people are asking questions about the budget, it should go ahead and be submitted and done. If it's that it helps Ms. Burden to record which person did that, then going forward, and I'll work with our Chair of the Board and our Clerk of the Board to have that process more clearly delineated. Because I don't want us to be sitting here, we're trying to focus, we're asking our questions, and then I have to remember, oh, let me write that down, let me submit that as a budget question. I'm doing the work right here, as are you and everybody else. But we'll figure out administratively how to do that in a streamlined way.
Important clarification, because we also felt like there was many things that maybe weren't considered budget question items that, like PD for IAs is something that I had brought up, but it's not refined as much. So we just need to figure out, you know, the process as to where we delineate some of those, those questions and things like that, whether it's here or somewhere else, so that it gets captured.
They're all budget questions. Just email me, and we will move them through the, the process. I mean, even if it's questions about program, it's still, I mean, many of our budget questions are about, tell me about some program. Just send them to us, and we'll push them to the right department and get an answer back as part of the budget question process.
All right, so, Madam Clerk, what I would ask for today, our next step to you, is if you can take today's work session questions that were asked and send them out to the full Board. Board members, what I would just recommend is, go ahead and just send the email to Ms. Burden, because they'll want to have your name on it in order to make sure it's getting back to you. And if they can ask you any follow-up questions about yours, then that's at least a way that we'll follow the typical budgets question. But this is at least the parking lot where everything's captured from what we did today, which is also important for the public to understand what we were asking. And then the same thing, Ms. Burden, when you send us the notes through our Chair on what we asked Thursday night. Board members, again, just go ahead, cut and paste your questions in, send them over to Ms. Burden, so we've got it accurate that which Board member was asking it. Ms. Burden, would, did you want to comment?
Well, I mean, some of these questions, we already have as questions that came up Thursday night and who asked them. So you all will be able to see that, and they're already with the departments, being worked on.
Okay, I just, even then, if it's just a matter of Board members are just making sure you have it, yep. Thank you so much, everybody. This budget work session is concluded.